Okay, it looks like we've got a quorum here with us today. So if you would, I'm going to call us to order and can you do a roll call for us?
Here.
Deathridge.
Carson.
Here.
Tenny.
Here.
Archer.
Here.
LaPac.
Okay, if you would, let's move on to agenda item number two, the Pledge of Allegiance, Oklahoma Flag Sleuth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the Oklahoma Flag Sleuth. I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma, its symbols of peace unite all people.
Now, I'm going to say a prayer. I pray that every Oklahoma child is provided an education that gives them every opportunity in life that they desire. I pray that every parent is involved and treated as the one who knows best for their child, as God intended. I pray that every teacher is provided the wisdom and resources to truly impact every child's life for the better. Amen. Thank you. And now we'll move forward with agenda item number three. I have some remarks. First, I want to start by thanking Ryan Leonard for joining the team as the State Board Attorney. So thank you very much. Do you want to introduce your staff with you as well?
Thank you. This is also Elaine, did you see who?
Excellent. I appreciate having you onboard. Thank you for your service for Oklahoma students and I really appreciate it. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
I would like to start with a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk. Charlie was a friend. Charlie did a tremendous job inspiring the next generation, fighting for the future of the country. His legacy will have a tremendous impact in the country moving forward. So if you would, join me in a moment of silence for Charlie. Charlie stood for free speech, debate. He inspired a generation of Americans, a generation of Oklahomans. We're very excited to announce we'll have a Turning Point USA chapter in every high school in the state of Oklahoma. It'll be the first state to do that. We want to continue to inspire students to engage in free speech debate and understand American values and what that means for the country. And I believe it's vital for the future of America to continue this mission. We've seen a tremendous outpouring from folks all over the state on starting these chapters. We were lucky to announce last year with Charlie, the high school chapters of Turning Point USA. And we've been working with their national team and their local team on ensuring this goal. I would like to introduce and I would like for Mason Cotrell, the Southern Regional Manager of Turning Point USA, to give us an update on their work here during my opening remarks. So Mason, if you would, join us?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. There we go. All right. My name is Mason Cotrell. For the last two years, I was the college field representative for Turning Point USA in Oklahoma. My time in that role culminated when my Oklahoma State chapter had the honor of hosting Charlie Kirk on campus and one of his iconic proved me wrongs. I have since taken on a new role with Turning Point as the Southern Club America Regional Manager. With this role, I oversee six field reps that start and grow TPUSA High School, now called Club America Chapters, in Kansas, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Louisiana, Mississippi, Alabama, and West Tennessee. My Oklahoma rep, Rob, is here with me today. Working for TPUSA under Charlie Kirk was an honor and I am honored to now work under his widow, Erica. I appreciate Ryan Walters and his desire to see a Club America Chapter in every high school in Oklahoma and would love to tell you more about what that looks like. Club America Chapters are voluntarily student-led groups on public and private high school campuses and homeschool groups. Club America serves to empower the patriotic leaders of tomorrow. Chapters plan out initiatives and meetings that cover a wide range of topics. Each week, there are themes that we provide for student groups to follow if they choose. Example of those themes, this semester are united we stand, local elections matter, taxes are shady, and restore the pledge. The day Charlie Kirk was murdered, I was in Nashville, working with my field rep there. The theme that week was united we stand, which was meant to be a tie-in to commemorate 9/11. Two hours before Charlie was shot, I accompanied a local Club America Chapter on their meeting for the day. They delivered handwritten notes to a fire station and the firefighters there gave them a tour for an hour. Pretty intimidating, if you ask me, huh? The day before, a Club America Chapter in the Nashville area hosted two of our contributors who spoke on standing up for their beliefs and how to be a good leader and citizen. And the following day, after one of the darkest days in U.S. history, Club America High School students placed American flags throughout their schools, throughout the lawns of their schools, to commemorate 9/11, and then gathered around a flagpole with the flags lowered in honor of Charlie Kirk and prayed. Prayed for our country, prayed for the Kirk family. These are the kind of initiatives you can expect from a Club America Chapter. Other chapters have had discussions on how to have a civil debate, played constitutional jeopardy, done voter registration drives, ensured there were American flags in every classroom, and have had discussions on how to make better health and financial decisions. If that sounds like something you would enjoy, I would encourage you to help us start a Club America Chapter at your high school. If that sounds too controversial to you or intimidated by a group of high schoolers carrying out those initiatives, then I don't know what to tell you. But I will tell you this, me and my team of reps and the whole high school/Club America department will not rest until we have a Club America Chapter in every high school in Oklahoma and across this country. We will not be intimidated by mobs, we will not be intimidated by assassins, we will work late into the evening, we will wake up early, we will reach every conservative student to empower them to lead and create change on their campus. The work to save America continues and will be stronger than ever. An assassin may have taken Charlie's life, but millions of high school and college students will now carry his voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mason, for the work you're doing. I appreciate it. We've had some fun at some events over there. So really appreciate you guys. Thank you for the partnership over the last couple of years.
Thank you very much, Mason. Appreciate you, brother.
That concludes my remarks. As we're moving into agenda item number four, we've got some administrative discussion of possible action. We've got two items here. Mr. Leonard, would we do those individually, together?
Do them separately.
Do them separately? Okay, so the first one is a discussion of possible action on the minutes of the July 24th regular meeting of the State Board of Education. So let's deal with that one first, if we have any discussion or possible action. Is there a motion to approve?
I would motion that we approve the July 24th minutes.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Can we call for roll?
Vandehen.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes.
Tenny.
Yes.
Archer.
Yes.
Superintendent Walters.
Yes. Motion approved. Next item is discussion of possible action on the minutes of the September 3rd, 2025 Special Meeting of the State Board of Education. Do we have any discussion around that or any actions, proposed actions? Is there a motion?
I motion for approval.
Is there a second?
I don't know if this is significant. It doesn't really bother me, but number two, where it said Mr. Tenny welcomed everyone and led the members in prayer, that was Mr. Deathridge that prayed, but if we want to amend that or just, it's not a big deal, but I'll ask the attorney.
Can you?
Yeah.
You could make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, can we? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as just including that Mr. Deathridge, Ryan Deathridge led in prayer. Other than that, make a motion to be approved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Can we do a roll call?
Vandehen.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes.
Tenny.
Yes.
Archer.
Yes.
Superintendent Walters.
Yes. Motion passes. Let's take a look now at the next item on the agenda is the Consent Docket. I would encourage you all to turn there in your packet. There's a lot there. Again, let's do this individually. So let's first, let me get there first. Let's take a look at the first item, which is the Emergency Provisional Teacher Certifications. You've got a long list here in front of you, so, and again, any items on the consent docket, if we want to pull anything off individually, to vote separately, you know, those are, you know, good time to do it. I'm unaware of anyone who wanted anything pulled off individually beforehand, but we can absolutely do that now. If there are certain items on the consent agenda that you would want to be pulled out of there and voted on separately. So let's look at item A and discussion or any possible motions there.
Superintendent Walters, I know on this particular item, there's been considerable discussion on the timing of this issue relative to the fact that we did not have an August meeting. And so many of these folks are in the classroom at substitute pay. And I believe it's possible that we make this retroactive to the first of school year, whatever that might be for particular schools, so that they can receive back pay for that time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question. So this is a, there's nothing in statute that requires the back pay, but districts, it is a local decision. We've spoken to dozens of districts about this, it's something that we do, we've done it the last three years and prior to me as well, of districts. Usually, it's the beginning of the contract, so beginning of school year or, you know, the July, July 1 date. But once these go through, it's kind of more of a, it's a technical, kind of the way that they're coded, they can go back then and do that. So we've already worked with, you know, the biggest, Oklahoma City, they've already worked through it, already committed to that. Every district we've talked to has committed to back pay. They're starting with the beginning of the contract. So yes, sir, that's kind of how that would.
And I agree, it is a local issue. My intent was not to override that, rather, if there was a question, to allow their board to understand it's acceptable.
Yes, sir, and we're happy to work with any district if they have any questions. We've walked them through kind of the coding aspect of it, that, you know, on our end, that wouldn't flag any irregularities as their documentation comes in for accreditation, things like that. But we'll happily continue those conversations with districts. And so we've sent out emails, but we've also encouraged them, hey, we're happy to walk you through it, kind of the way it would be coded. Any issue like that, there wouldn't be any, anything flagged in our system as it being irregular, anything like that.
Mr. Superintendent, along the same line, I've talked to superintendents who, afraid they're going to lose those teachers, have gone ahead and increased their pay based on the assumption they would be granted cert. And I just want to assure that that is okay, that they won't be flagged or anything either.
Yes, sir. And again, on any questions like that, we're happy to answer them directly. You know, we are going to see here later, it's not this particular issue, but if there's a unique situation a school has, we're happy to walk them through it. But anything dealing with emergency certification and that pay, there won't be any issues when it comes to accreditation, won't be any issues on our end on the coding front. So yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
The motion could include a provision to authorize the back pay. It would be a local decision, but the motion could include a provision to authorize the back pay.
That could help show, I think, clarity, if that's...
Yeah, so with that, I would make a motion that we approve the emergency certifications with a possible effective date depending on local board decision, back to the beginning of the contract.
I'll second that.
Mr. Leonard, was that appropriate to?
Just to make it clear that the State Board authorizes the back pay subject to the local decision.
Okay.
Showing no problem with the back pay.
So is that motion okay or do I need?
Yes, that motion's okay.
Okay.
Would require a second. I did.
And we've got, so we've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Okay, we need a call roll for us?
Vandehen.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes.
Tenny.
Yes.
Archer.
Yes.
Superintendent Walters.
Yes. Motion passes. Next item here is, and I believe we've got representatives here, and so I can give you a synopsis, but if, do we have representatives from Uphaul Public Schools in Carlton Landing here with us? Okay, we don't, so I will give you the synopsis. So these two districts have been working on this. Carlton Landing does not have a superintendent right now, so what they would do is they would share services with Uphaul, so it would be a sharing of a superintendent salary there so that the superintendent would actually be the superintendent over Uphaul Public Schools, Carlton Landing Public Schools, both board, there's no issue here, but both are in agreement, very smooth. It was their proposal. It does require board approval, State Board approval for them to do that, but again, frankly, it is a cost-saving effort and frankly, it's an example of two districts working together. Again, not in, you know, kind of, you know, looking out for one another, I would say here, and if you're not familiar, Carlton Landing is there, is located in Uphaul or near Uphaul. So these are very, very close to one another. So that's what, that would, that, a vote there would allow them to move forward in a sharing of superintendent services for the same individual.
Superintendent, this indicates that for not more than three years, and it appears this is year two, what would happen? It seems like that's a good idea to share that cost and experience. What happens after three years?
Yes, sir. Now, after three years, they could come back to the board, they could ask for an extension there, but traditionally, that has been the amount of time. And so they could come back, they could change it. Again, my understanding is, you know, they're going to do this for the time and then determine upon the growth of Carlton Landing, growth of Uphaul, if they want to continue with that, or do they want to, do they want to go in a separate direction and hire a separate individual? So I believe it's a, this is what they want to do now for the present time. I don't think it's a permanent decision at this point, but they would like to pursue this for the time and then take a look at the end of the year to determine how much longer they would like to proceed with that.
Okay, thank you. I would move that we approve this request.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, can you call roll for us?
Vandehen.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes.
Tenny.
Yes.
Archer.
Yes.
Superintendent Walters.
Yes. Motion passes. Now, these, action item C is what I was referring to earlier. We do have three unique situations here. I believe we have representatives from all three schools here. Again, I can sum it up, but I would prefer them to get up and talk about this. So basically, what we have are three districts that were late on claims with federal programs. If you're late in those claims, we can reject them or we can approve them. That is a duty of the board to make that determination. I think this is a very functional process here. If there's a unique situation, the board has the ability to accept those late claims. All three are unique in their own ways, so I would like for the representative from Snyder Public Schools to step up. If you could give us kind of the explanation here, and again, board, feel free to talk through this with them, but yeah, we'll just take them one at a time here. So if you could introduce yourself and kind of give us a synopsis there.
My name's Jimmy Smith. I'm the superintendent at Snyder Public School. The ladies in our office have never been late with a claim in their entire lives and it really upset them and they, and whenever we were late with it, they thought that the deadline to get it in was August 30th, when it was actually August 1st. And we were waiting on a claim. We had had some extra 511 money that we needed Chromebooks for some students and some tutoring. And we were waiting for the company to send us an invoice because we can't put a quote down in our expenditure report. Whenever we make a claim, we have to have an invoice and we were waiting on that and the invoice was late, so the ladies were late. And we know the deadline now and we discussed it, so we would appreciate if you guys would approve that claim. And we will certainly work and not to do that again.
So what has been done, so this 22,000 was for Chromebooks?
Yes.
Have you purchased those Chromebooks or are you waiting on this funding?
No, we have purchased them.
So this is a reimbursement?
Yes, yes, basically. It's, you pay it out of there and then when you guys reimburse us, it goes back in into that.
Very good question. So on the claims, they have to spend the money, then make the claims to us for the reimbursement. And so in this particular situation, when the vendors are late, giving them the documentation, that kind of put them in a crunch timeline here of getting that over.
Do we want to vote on each one separately or do them all together? What is...
Mr. Leonard there, if you didn't hear him, he said that he thinks it'd probably be better to do them separately since they're all unique situations.
I'll make a motion to approve Snyder's request.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Can you call roll for us, please?
Vandehen.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes.
Tenny.
Yes.
Archer.
Yes.
Superintendent Walters.
Yes. Thank you, and thank you for being here today to walk us through that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you guys approving that for us.
Absolutely. Next, do we have a representative from Tallahena Public Schools?
I'm Jason Lockhart, superintendent at Tallahena Public Schools. Thank y'all for the opportunity to be here. Our situation is definitely unique in the sense that we lost four staff members last year. Current staff members, heart attack, you know, all deaths. That's never happened in my 33 years in a school system, the last of which was our incumbent clerk on the 25th of May. And when the incumbent clerk goes down on the 25th of May and you're turning into June payroll, which is a combination payroll to get ready to close out, we were bringing in colleagues from other campuses that were very helpful to, the State Department was very helpful, but in the process of things, we were just overwhelmed and basically treading water. By the time we realized that we, we were actually trying to close out federal funds that we thought were already done by the passed away incumbent clerk, when we realized some had not been done. And so that's why we ended up being late on our claims. Be happy to answer any questions. I have a timeline here if y'all need that, but the 25th of May is the date that our incumbent clerk passed.
Superintendent, if I could, I'm sorry to hear about the loss there. I did want to tell the board, every year since I've been here, we've had a situation where, again, when an individual that involved in the school finances, if there's a sudden passing or something to that effect, they're doing quite a bit, you know, there's quite a bit of movement there, a lot of paperwork there, and so, you know, districts trying to kind of cross all the Ts, dot all the Is there. And so, you know, districts trying to kind of cross all the Ts, dot all the Is there can be difficult. And so they've been, they've been great working with them. My team's bragged on them of, you know, hey, you know, they're, they're asking all the right questions. They're, they're trying to get everything up to speed. But I will say they were, they were put in a very difficult spot, losing, you know, several individuals. But particularly that encumbrance clerk is, is someone who'd done it for a while. And so that, that individual had always done a great job, never had an issue. And then with, with their loss, I think it put them in a really tough spot. So this is one I, I would recommend.
You don't realize how dependent you are on great employees until they're not with you anymore.
Yeah. Superintendent, clearly tragic for your community and hope everyone's recovering well. So are there any other items that may be kind of out there that fall into this category?
We have found a couple of other situations where we, we have already spent the money and we didn't make a claim. But they're all, those are situations where we can just carry that over into this year's money and not do a late claim on it. This was kind of unique in that sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussions or proposed motions?
I would make a motion that we approve this exception.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Can you call roll for us, Jennifer?
Vanderhun?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Archer?
Yes.
Superintendent Walters?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Superintendent. Again, sorry for your loss. Thank you for your work to, to get everything up to speed.
Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Next, we have Coyle Public Schools. We have a representative here.
All right. Thank you guys very much. Hopefully you got my letter, kind of explaining what our circumstances were going in there. We were one of the schools that were fortunate enough to get the comprehensive literacy grant. And by the, we were notified in April, by the time we got our grant submission, claimed, working with State Department, ready to go. We had about 40 days to spend $240,000 to be able to kick that grant off. So we did our due diligence. We came down to some credit card receipts right there at the end of July that we'd spent for some professional development and some things like that. We were trying to get our vendors to get our invoices corrected so that the federal grant wouldn't get kicked back on us. So that's the reason we missed it on that Friday, but we got it in on that following Tuesday, once we got everything corrected. So we were able to get everything kicked off, get our teachers trained and implement that for our August one date there at our school, so.
And Superintendent, can you, can you remind the board, size of your school district?
We're about 370 kids right now.
And I, I want to brag on them for one second. When we launched these literacy grants across the state, large districts have a lot of staff. You know, and I think I've told you guys, Oklahoma City and Tulsa, I, I feel, have a lot of respect for the leadership there. And they're always quick to jump on it and they've got staff to work on it. I want to brag on the superintendent here of, you know, this is a, a small, smaller district that, that has always been on board with, hey, you got a literacy grant, sign us up, we're going to get moving with it. So I do want to thank you for that of jumping on board and saying, yep, literacy, absolutely. We, we will utilize whatever resources are available. And so I do want to brag on the superintendent of smaller schools with smaller staff. You know, people wear multiple hats and when they get a grant, you know, somebody's got additional hats. So I did want to commend you for that of being a, a, a smaller district that has utilized the funding well, has always been one of the first districts to say, yep, that's exactly what we want to do here. And so I did want to, want to say thank you. And, and I did want to give the board just the context of it is a smaller district. It is a smaller district that has been very good about utilizing resources available to them to make sure that their kids have, and teachers have all the best literacy resources the state offers.
Thank you. Superintendent, it's 176,000. Could you just give a, give us some of the big pieces of that, what, what that was spent on?
Yeah. That, that grant's broken into three parts. So you have, you know, pre-K to birth, birth to pre-K is one section of that grant, kindergarten to fifth grade and then six through 12. So you have a percentage that you have to spend within those areas. So for our lower kids, we bought Frog Street. We partnered with Guthrie Early Head Start, which is our nonprofit organization. So we're helping train those as well, thinking those kids may be coming into our district. So we want them to have a leg up on that. Our elementary, we, we completely went through, updated all of our curriculum to amplify curriculum. And then that works in concert with AMIRA, which all of this goes into that MTSS, which is state law here in 2032. So all of that's kind of working in concert. We got our teachers trained in June and July in both those programs. Our high school, we bought about $14,000 worth of library books. We bought a lot of programs to help with ACT scores, to help with comprehension. We've got tutoring going on. So all of that kind of works, works together there. We also did a, a summer program there in June to bring in some of those lower tier two and tier three students to give them that one-on-one, small group tutoring, high dosage tutoring throughout the summer. So Emily and that staff's been great. We were just trying to work with vendors, trying to get, get it all lined up the way it needed to be so that it wasn't kicking back on her.
Thank you.
I do want to point out the superintendent's remarks there of, one of the things we've tried to do, and you're going to kind of see that with this other grant we'll talk about here in a mo, in a moment, is give districts a lot of flexibility. Districts use it differently. So we'll walk through some of the specifics on another grant. But again, one of, one of the objectives of these literacy grants were to give some guidance, some guidelines, but also allow that local autonomy to say, for our district, again, partnering with the Head Start, you know, that's, that's a, that's a great option that some districts use, utilize there, paying for tutoring, resources, curriculum, things like that. So again, these are pretty flexible grants. And again, we'll go through some detail on some of these other districts moving forward, but I did want to point that out. They do have quite a bit of flexibility within the guidance there, the guardrails of the grant. But you, you will see a lot of flexibility with all these grants.
May I ask a question, Superintendent? I know we're going to talk about the budget here in a bit, but just a matter of, that I should know about, is the money sitting, is the money still with the feds now? Or is it in the State Department waiting for the school to provide the information?
Great question. So, so basically the way that this works is we get the tranches of federal funding, and it is different depending on the grants. But what happens is, is we get the allocation of, you've got this amount of money. And then the way you pay federal dollars is it's all based on a reimbursement model. So whenever they do anything, and again, you, you hear the superintendent's talking about that, they have to spend the funds first. And then what happens is, is we show the notification, we show the documentation to the feds, and then we justify giving those dollars over. So it is, has to be done on a reimbursement basis, which where, when you heard about the vendor problem, why that is a problem. Because again, they have to expend the money first. We have to then show that record before those federal dollars are utilized by us to give down to the districts.
Thank you. I move that we approve this exception.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call roll for us, please.
Vanderhun?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Archer?
Yes.
Superintendent Walters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Superintendent, for being here today. And I do, I do want to be clear. I, I didn't want to mix that up too much. This is a different grant. So we are shifting into, I know we were talking about the literacy grant there. The, the, the approval here are for what's called the class grants. So these are the aw, the award for Oklahoma Classroom Learning and School Supplies. And, and I did want to give specifics for you all to see how these districts have utilized these funds. And so what they're asking for is approval to spend funds in this way. So you've got, you know, Bartlesville, Blair, Lawton, Lexington, Little Axe, Muskogee, OKCPS. So you've got, you know, one of the largest districts in Little Axe, you know, one of our, and Lexington, some of our smaller districts. So you can, you can kind of see here each individually. And again, they go through the grant process through the State Department of Education and then they continue. So this is their proposals, this is what they would do. And then they continue to update us on the progress and results of these individual grants as they move forward. So again, as they apply yearly for these things, for these types of grants, they're able to show us this is what they did in the past and just how they were utilized. So this is a separate grant program, but this is one that requires board approval for these individual districts.
And Superintendent Walters, somebody on your staff reviews their plan to make sure it complies with all the documentation?
Yes, sir. So districts apply and they have protocols and, or their guard, guardrails in place over how they can apply, what the process is. So they do this to the GMS system. So they're able to, to put in a request, then they detail out what that is. And then our team works with their team to review the application to make sure that it meets all the requirements of the grant and then the grants are awarded. And again, they've got a lot of flexibility with these. Again, these are for classroom expenditures. So, you know, they can give specifics on whether it involves literacy math. These are pretty broad. This is, this is done through the legislature. So again, it was meant to be very broad for the school districts. And so that's where you see, again, you've got a, quite an array of plans here. You got STEM, you've got some with, you know, cameras, different novel studies there in the literacy portion. So again, this one, special education services. So, you know, as, as you continue and, and to Mr. Tenny's point earlier about kind of the future budget, things like that, one of the things that the legislature's tried to do in the past is give some flexibility for some grant funding, very open-ended where districts can come propose ideas. If there is a specific need for a growing of a program, something like that, this allows to help meet that need for some individual districts.
And so if I'm reading your memo right, there's 35,000 appears annually for this. And these, while I've not done the math, your memo says it totaled 26,900. So does that mean you were able to accommodate all the applications or are there some that you weren't able to?
Some that we weren't able to. And, and it is not a lot of money. And so that's kind of where, you know, frankly, when we look at some of these programs in the future, that's always kind of the balancing act with the legislature is, is they typically like to do small amounts of funding. Let's see what they do with it. Let's see what the, what the, how successful the, the programs are. And then do we expand it? Do we look at another one? You know, you look at that with kind of like the teacher empowerment program as well of, of, you know, finding mentor lead teachers. Started out smaller and as time's gone on, they've had that reoccurring fund there. So, you know, they, it's kind of, they don't use the term here with this one as a pilot program, but it's very similar to that to, let's see how it's being utilized. And then we can always come back the following year, ask for the funds. And then the districts have their stories as well. So we're able to go back to the legislature and say, you know, look, Bartlesville is an example. Bartlesville was able to do this. We think that there would be, you know, we had X amount of applications. So we believe that we can do this in the future at a much higher level.
Okay. Thank you. Are these funds, like I know our budget request is coming up, are these funds in there somewhere? I know part of it was donated, but are these funds, where are they in the budget request or are they in there?
Yeah, yeah, you'll see, yeah, you'll see this in the budget. Yes, sir. Just, yeah, we could do all of them together. Is there a motion or any further discussion on these items or a motion to approve the seven districts?
I make a motion that we approve, this is what, item 5D, all seven items in one.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Can you call roll for us?
Vanderhun?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Archer?
Yes.
Superintendent Walters?
Yes. Motion passes. Team, if we can get, oh, there you go. Do you already have the budget presentation ready to go? Good, okay. Let's go ahead and start clicking through there and, and I'll give the board members a, a moment. This packet is here under item six there in your packet. So you can follow on the PowerPoint or there in front of you. Every state agency is required to propose a budget by October 1st. I do want to start off by, the legislature always wants the context of this is quite a process. What will happen after the submission? This goes to the governor's office, goes to the speaker, goes to the president pro tem of the Senate. Then informal meetings begin where the legislature will come in, start asking questions over the budget. There then is a budget process. Both chambers look slightly different and, and could be subject to change. Last year, the Senate had us come in, in a new process to promote transparency where we came in and testified multiple times to the budget. I believe we did it three times. Then we had the formal, thank you. Then we had the formal appropriation committee presentation. And then we had a formal vote in the appropriation committee, then a formal vote in each chamber. Then each chamber has to come together at the end of session with the governor's office to make determinations. So it, it's a starting point. Again, every, you know, dollar that we receive through the budget, the, the legislature approves except for federal dollars. So this will begin a process where we begin to engage with both chambers, governor's office. And so this is the starting of that. But just want to be clear, what it is is a proposal. You know, the Senate and House will have their own recommendations. They will have their own proposals. They may, they may pass things on an individual bill. They may put it all in the budget bill. So all of that will be included throughout the session. We've got the core values here on the first page, our mission statement, vision. I'm not going to read through all of it there, but what we're attempting to do and what our goal's been from the beginning is to continue to drive academic excellence, transparency and empower parents, teachers and students across the state. So when we begin to look through this budget, you're going to see the most fiscally responsible conservative budget in education. We continue to have that as our goal here for the people of Oklahoma. So you're going to see here, and I want to kind of walk us through, what I'll do too is, this is formal but, but informal. So as I go through here, I'm going to give you an overview, then we'll go through specifics. So at any point in time, you know, once we especially start going through specifics, just stop and, and let's go through, ask questions. I know that there was a couple of budget meetings that board members had with some of my staff. And so if, if we want to circle back to any of those questions or discussions, happy to do that now as well in the board meeting. But what we're looking at here is there is a slight increase. And I want to walk you through the increase that is in this budget is connected with the flexible benefit allowance. Flexible benefit allowance is the health insurance program for our teachers. And every year since I've been in office, I believe every year but one, in the previous eight years before me, we've had to come in and ask for changes to that supplemental, additional funds some years because it is an estimate of how much teachers' health insurance will be this year. We have the numbers of how many teachers we have currently. There could be more teachers added throughout the year. That always happens. But frankly, the biggest driver of that number are health insurance premiums that go up. And so it is an estimate. I, I will say, the legislature, every year when we get the added numbers as they come in, we've never had an issue with, we bring their team in, sit down with our team, what the estimates are, what the cost is. Again, they were very, very good at moving very quickly on the supplemental last year and the year before that as well. But our estimate is we're looking at a $21 million increase, a $23 million total increase. We're going to cut two and a half million from our overall budget. But still, that would leave us with that $21 million increase there to cover those expenses. And let me kind of dig into that a little bit, a little bit further here. A little bit of a, of a background there of the numbers that we're looking at over the past three years to give you some context there around that. And last year, to give you that context, the flexible benefit allowance increase was upwards of $80 million. And again, it, it is a, and I describe it to the legislature as it is, you know, obviously, when, when things cost more, that is a, a problem. Part of the reason is we are getting more teachers in our schools. So that does come from increased amount of teachers in the state. But also, again, the health insurance premiums are a very, very tough market to predict. So to kind of walk you through where the cuts would come from, there are some line items here. And just to be, and I'll go through each of these individually. But again, as we're looking at getting the most bang for our buck from a, from the budget, making sure taxpayers' dollars are protected, I've asked for cuts and I'm going just a little, kind of going from bottom to top. I've, I've asked for the cuts for Imagine Math and Imagine Reading the last few years. Again, we have some districts that use them. We have some districts that don't. You know, my, my position's always been with kind of the line items on things like this. You're picking one vendor over another. You know, it's, it's a difficult process when you've got a lot of schools. over another. You know, it's, it's a difficult process when you've got a lot of schools say, well, I don't use it. I don't want to use it. And you've got some schools that do. And so when you look at kind of the flexibility of our funding model for education, you know, we've more leaned on the, we've increased education funding if you want to use these programs. And again, I'm not being disparaging of the individual vendors, but just leaving that open for the individual districts to make that decision rather than utilizing state funds to be directed solely for them. The other one is, and again, I'm a big fan of Ag in the Classroom, but I want to give you the context. The funding in the past, when this has been proposed, was to write curriculum for the program. So that was, and you see, it's a really small number, but, but it was meant to create that curriculum. Well, now, the national Ag in the Classroom program is writing the curriculum. So we didn't see that funds for that program are any longer necessary. And again, great expectations. I would put it in the category of Imagine Math and Imagine Reading. Again, you've got some school districts that really like it. You've got some school districts that don't utilize it. So again, directing the state funding for those things, I think would be better done at the local level. If they want to choose to spend money for those programs, they can. But we didn't see a dramatic ROI to justify line iteming those items out individually. So I'm going to stop right there. Again, this is kind of the high level overview. And then we'll kind of drill down into, well, actually, I'll put the chart up, just the context here, because I do think it's important as you talk to folks around the state of Oklahoma, you know, the education budget, most of what we oversee is that state aid, obviously. And so just the, the chart gives you a better indication of that, of what we're looking at here. There are those individual line items outside of state aid. So you have the Red Bud Fund, maternity leave textbook funding, FBA, we have the public schools activity budget, the agency administrative budget, and the Lottery Trust Fund, which again, has been one that, has been directed towards the teacher empowerment program, which again, we've now got over 1,000 teachers in that program. So I, I can't speak highly enough of that program. But those, that, that gives you a little, at least visually there of kind of what we're looking at from, from budgetary costs. Before we move down kind of further into the individual items, I did want to go into a little more detail on, on a couple of these that are, that are unique. The maternity leave program is something board members have asked about in the past. Just to give some context, we receive funding directly from the state to cover female teachers who give birth for up to six weeks of leave. So again, what, what, what happens there is districts notify us. When a teacher goes on leave, in the past, districts would eat those costs. When they notify us, when they show that documentation, then they then receive the funding directly from the State Department of Ed. So that was a program that was used for teacher recruitment. We saw a lot of teachers. You know, districts talk about the struggle there of individuals on maternity leave. It was a local, localized matter, but the, the state legislature thought it would be wise to cover those costs. And again, frankly, that's been one that we've heard a lot of positive feedback from. We're able to assure teachers that that funding is there. It's, it's line itemed for that. And so that is, that is statutory there. The Red Bud Budget, just to, again, a little bit different, it does come from the medical marijuana tax revenue. And, and that goes out, you get questions on this because it is different, different funding stream, but that does go out through the state aid formula. So that is not a fund of discretionary dollars. That's not a, an application. That's not a, that's not a fund where it's directed in any way other than it goes to the state aid formula. And so just wanted to be clear, you're, you're going to, that's one that you will be asked about, I'm sure, just Red Bud Funding, what is it? How does it become implemented? But, but that was the way that was set in statute.
Can I follow up the question? I somehow thought that Red Bud Fund went, was designated to specific schools. So do they have to qualify to get that additional money in their state formula somehow?
Yeah, it, it runs through the state aid formula. So again, you're going to see, because of the way that that's set up, rural schools, schools with very low ad valorem dollars. And so that, that was the way that it was put into that state aid formula. So, so it's, it's just however the schools qualify based on their ad valorem dollars is the, is the amount that they receive. And so when that comes out, we always publish it just for full transparency for the public, but also the districts to see, here's the formula, here's the formula that ran through. And it comes out in this chart where they can see the percentage and kind of that breakdown. And it, again, for them, it's the same way they look at the state aid formula. So they can look at the same formula and understand, this is why we got X amount, this is why we don't have X amount. And again, as their ad valorem dollars change, that funding will change as well. So it is, it is not, you're going to get 23 million this year, 23 million next year. It, it depends on the calculations based on all your property taxes, enrollment, et cetera. And then I mentioned the Teacher Empowerment Fund because I'm a big fan of it. But I do want to point out too, with the Lottery Trust Fund, half of those funds are appropriated to the teacher retirement system. So we don't directly oversee the teacher retirement system, but I do want you to have the overall picture of, half of those funds do go directly into the teacher retirement system. And again, there is a separate board that governs over that. We always get a lot of questions on it. And if you guys ever do forward it to us, and we'll, we'll kind of direct it over there. But there is a, a separate teacher retirement board that oversees those funds. But we always try to give the, the public in the school district kind of the context of where those dollars come from in the budget
Superintendent Walters, I, I believe, so the 23 million increase in flexible benefits.
Yes, sir.
I believe all that's run through OMES. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
So are they providing direction on that? Or is that an estimate from the Department of Education?
Yeah, good question. No, that's, that's our estimate. And, and you know, we go through those numbers of, here's what we have of the current teacher count. Here's, yes, and by the way, all state employees use the same medical insurances, things like that. So we're able to go, our estimates are the same as your estimates, but here's the number of teachers to the best information we have at this point in time. And so we do work with them to make sure that we're looking at the same numbers, same estimates. And, and where the number is now is where those estimates come out. And again, as those things change, you know, we have more individuals through ours than obviously any other state agency as you're looking at the amount of teachers in the state of Oklahoma. So other changes to other agencies when those hit are not near the increase that we see. And so like I, like I said earlier, the legislature has been very good to, we flag for them as soon as we see, hey, look, you know, we're seeing the numbers. We're also seeing an increase in, in teachers for the year. You know, we're looking at X amount. And so that became, that is always a discussion throughout session to make sure that that number is drilled down on before the end of the budget. And frankly, the legislature, every year that I've been here, they pass that supplemental before the budget. So they, they pass it during the school year, get the money out the door. So that way districts, the money's here, money's going out. You're not waiting for the end of the budgetary process to play out. We give them an estimate. We let them meet with our team, meet with their teams. And we're able to kind of come to an agreement on that. And frankly, we haven't had any issues in the past on the estimates or the numbers. Not a disagreement between the teams. So that's been a very productive relationship. And again, they just, the legislature's looked at it several ways. And how do we address insurance premiums? It's not a, you know, State Department of Education specific issue, but I would say it affects us more than anybody else because of the amount of employees. So again, the numbers, when other folks are asking for a supplemental, it may be a million dollars. And you know, we're looking at upwards of 20. At last year, 80 million dollars. So it, it just varies greatly in the impact there of those insurance premiums.
One more question on that. I, as I understand that, teachers who do not use the state health insurance, or perhaps they've got a spouse and they have it under the, with their spouse, they're paid a lump sum per month. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that vary? Or is that just set in statute? Does it vary as insurance premiums go up?
I, I believe that's set in statute. And the legislature's looked at that before. And it's, I'll tell you, it's, it's a hotly debated one. Should we give teachers more money to opt out where there's less teachers on the flexible benefit allowance? You know, there's concerns of what that could be. Could we offer more providers? Again, that, again, is kind of a more holistic issue there. But yes, sir, it is a small amount. I mean, you talk to teachers, and I don't, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but you know, teachers go, well, I opt out. That's, that's not enough to cover this. So, yeah. So it's something that, again, I think, you know, in the future, making a request of the legislature or an ask of the legislature could be very appropriate. You know, we can have the team crack, you know, look at some numbers. You know, if there's 1,000 that were to opt out, you know, what would the cost be? Again, I'll just tell you, just very strong differences of opinion on that of, do we want to encourage them to opt out or not? So those talks are always going on, but I haven't seen a culmination around the legislature of that, that, that sounds like the way to do it or not. And frankly, I think they, they've looked at it more holistically of how do we do this, just generally speaking, and drive these costs down.
So the, the amount that a teacher would get for not being in the plan is the same as any other state employee that would opt out?
I believe that's correct. We, we can dig into that. But I believe because it's the same plan, that it is a similar opt out rate. And again, because of our size, if that is something the board wants to pursue, you know, we would be the group that would come forward and say, yeah, you know, we're, we're looking at tens of thousands of individuals on this. So it, it would have a dramatic impact. And frankly, it would have a dramatic impact to the providers. So very, I think, appropriate discussion to have. I think a very appropriate suggestion to make. And again, with legislative leadership, I think it would be something that would be top of mind of if there is a solution or if there is a suggestion that's made to them by us. I think it was something they would take very seriously and look at.
Yeah, I, I think this goes beyond the scope of this discussion. But having, dealing with this in my employment side, a hundred dollars is not enough. And the cost of that is significant. So I, I mean, I, I recognize it's not a Department of Education issue. It's a state issue. But I, I would encourage the state to look at that because that doesn't make sense.
And I'll, and I'll, you know, it's, it's our, our toughest budgetary item. I mean, it, it is the toughest thing that we deal with from the standpoint of you can put together an estimate. But the, the volatility of that market, you know, again, you know, everything else, everything else here is pretty straightforward with, you know, whether we want to do it or not. But having a number that can change 80 million dollars within a few months is a tough one to look at. And again, appreciate the patience of the legislature and, and their understanding of the concern there of supplementing those, those funds if that happens. And at the same time, we're trying to give them the best estimate we can, a good faith estimate there. But with the acknowledgement of, I mean, if, you know, there's really no way for us to predict it any better than that. And you don't want to go ask for more money than you need is kind of the other part of it. So, but I agree with you completely. It is, for, for our budgetary asks, it is the toughest number to land on, for sure.
On, on a little different topic. So the 26 appropria, so this is talking about the 27 appropriation.
Yes, sir.
The 26 was 3.94 billion dollars, basically. 27, so it's up a little. But I guess my question is on the 25 appropriation. So school year 24, 25 that we've just ended, how did we, how did we come out on that? I, I've not seen any data that says we were within budget, we were over budget, we were under budget. So how, I'm assuming somebody has that data.
Sure. Yeah, no, we're happy to provide it for you. Right now, you know, we've hit the, hit the budget marks. And, and as you've seen, the decrease that we've asked for, that, that has been, what has been reflective of the, the previous year's budget as we continue to look for any kind of cost saving measure. And again, what we've seen is the programs we've been able to spread across the state, the legislature's put a record amount of funding into education. That's why you don't see us asking for more money in that allocation. What you've seen us try to drive the discussion toward is how is the money being spent? How do we best utilize these dollars? And so, but yeah, no, we're happy to give you a breakdown and walk, walk through kind of those numbers and where they ended up. But, but for us, I, we think that these funding levels are very sustainable moving forward. We are seeing record teacher recruitment. We are seeing the literacy programs, tutoring programs. We were able to launch the largest literacy and tutoring programs in the state. Those have been able to be sustained. That was part of frankly, you know, one of the first things I looked at coming on board is remember, in 2023, we really had all of the COVID dollars gone. Tulsa Public Schools and Oklahoma City Public Schools were the largest recipients of those dollars. Most of those dollars were spent towards summer school programs. So our concern right off the bat was, we've got to continue the summer school programs. So how do we do that with existing funds? Can we find flexibility in existing funds? So a lot of these grants, the flexibilities are, can you continue to do these tutoring services at the level, if not increased, moving forward? So at two new leaders in those two districts, those were two of our biggest problems to tackle right off the bat is we do not want to go ask for more money. So we have these funds available. Are there funds that we can cut? We eliminated line items in the first two years. And again, you'll see that reflective in this budget to say, we would prefer that go into these broader grants and allow you all to have the flexibility to do these things with them. And again, some districts opt in to continue to use those same vendors. But it has allowed districts that utilize COVID dollars. And again, obviously, we have a lot more schools than the two I mentioned. But they were the ones that saw the most dramatic decrease, decrease. They're the ones that saw a record amount of dollars they utilized. I think they did a good job with their summer school and tutoring programs. And so keeping those implemented moving forward, the way we saw to do that, eliminate line items, give the money in these broader grants, in these literacy grants, these type of programs, tutoring funds. And that's how they were able to move forward with them.
Superintendent, I've got a question too. I noticed that, I was reading the general appropriation bill for this year.
Mm-hmm.
And there are about 20 paragraphs in there that give roughly $4 billion to the Board of Education to supervise, which is kind of scary. I know that fiscal year started July 1. And I've only been on the board about six months. I haven't been here a full year. But when does the board see where that $4 billion is going? I mean, most board meetings have a, usually have a financial report. So when do we see that money that we're legally responsible for, when do we see where that money is going?
Sure. We have all that information readily available. What, what happens is the school districts get the funding through the state aid formula. So all of those, well, I shouldn't say all of them. Was it 97%, 98% are legislatively directed to go through the state funding formula. And so again, they chose to do the same thing with the Red Bud Fund. But other than that, when they are directing the $4 billion, it is in statute what the formula is. So any changes to the formula is not done by the agency. That's done through statute. They made a change 2022 to that. But that formula is set. So when the, when those funds come in, what happens is the school districts get those multiple times throughout the year. October 1 is your next, your, your next date on that. But those funds go through the funding formula. They are dispersed in that mechanism. And again, we don't have a lot of flexibility around that. But again, the numbers, we send them out to districts, we send them an estimate, and then we send the actual, here's when it hits your account, all those type of things. Can absolutely include the board in those correspondence as well. But that's, that's the way the money flows.
Yeah, I was just wanting to ask if there could be like a financial report or at least something in our materials each month or at least each quarter or something that just shows us where the budgeted money is going. I mean, I realize most of it's in the state formula. But if we could do that, because that kind of is our responsibility. So we would like to just have some idea of where that money actually, we can track that it's going where it says it's going.
Sure. Yeah. We have it all online and we'll just provide it for.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. And I guess that's my concern as well. The 27 request effectively is driven off the 26 numbers. None of us have seen those numbers. I appreciate the fact that 97, 98% is directed through legislation. But, and I know we're not in Missouri, but I'm, I'm kind of a show me kind of guy. I'd like to see a document that's, that says for school year 24, 25, here's what was appropriated, here's what was allocated out through the formula, here's what was not allocated out, and here's how that was spent. And I, I don't, I don't know that I'm comfortable. So I recognize this is just, for lack of a better term, a suggestion to the legislator, legislature, what they might do. But I'm not comfortable not even knowing what past performance was, that I'm comfortable saying this is, this is our suggestion. So how quickly could we get that information to show us the 25 appropriation was X, and here's how it was allocated out?
And we'd have to look. So in every year, all, all government expenditures goes through record through OMES. So all, all. So all all expenditures are there in real time, so I'd I'd have to look to see, but I mean, all of it's there, recorded. Those are things that are functionally all right there, so.
And and I believe we're working on October 1 commitment to get that data.
Well, can you kind of walk through that, Mr. Leonard, of, I mean, what's the statute say? What, how does that?
So the statute says, with respect to the budget, Title 62, Section 34.36A, says, "On the first day of October preceding each regular session of the legislature, each state agency, including those created or established pursuant to constitutional provisions, shall report to the Director of the Office of Management and Enterprise Services and the Chair and Vice Chair of the Legislative Oversight Committee on State Budget Performance, an itemized request showing the amount needed for the ensuing fiscal year, beginning with the first day of July." So it, the statute does say that each each agency shall provide this.
And does anything in there say what happens if we don't do that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do we have any idea, is this like a lot of things that goes over October 1, and then December 10th, they look at it, or do we know that process?
I personally don't know that process. I just know what what the law says.
Right.
I just, this is $4 billion we're talking about, and we, and I certainly appreciate the work. I know that must have gone into this, but we just got this pretty recently, and it's it's like, you know, I I would spend more time on our own home budget, this way puny, compared to this. And, you know, we're, we're asking how to vote on it now, and that's just a concern. I know we need to keep things moving, but I'm just looking for, I mean, that's a problem I have.
Yeah, and and I I do want to state for the record, we did, I personally had a call, went through this data with some of your staff. Very helpful, very much appreciated. But sometimes you wake up in the middle of the night thinking, so I, I'm not sure how we get there. I appreciate there's a process, but I, I personally would like to see some of that data before I would vote to submit this to the state. So that's an opinion of one.
Do we have any further discussions or any motions on the budget in front of you?
I'd make a motion, sorry. I'd make a motion that we table the decision on the budget until we get the requested information.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I had another question. You had made some announcement about a reading program. I didn't get all the details of it.
And I just suggest, since the the question is on the pending motion, would suggest rounding out the discussion on the motion and then bringing up something else.
Sure, sure.
I apologize.
Call for all call.
Andehan?
Before I register my vote, the vote is to table this discussion until we get the, yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Archer?
No.
Superintendent Walters?
No. Motion passes. So that would be item six. So next, we have new business. Do we have any new business?
I have a question. The, there's a statute, the, Higginsville 711 took the absenteeism out of the scores for grading the schools and told the board to enact new rules, and I know those rules were posted by the State Department. And I think the deadline in the statute to submit those to the federal government is August 1, but those rules have not come before us to examine and vote on. I was just wondering what the status of those rules is.
The status on the rules for, um, status on the rules for the change in the absenteeism, I'd have to go take a look at it.
Okay, I I'd appreciate that because I think that we're past the deadline on those rules, and it hasn't been in front of the board yet.
Any other new business?
I think this qualifies, and I'll look to Mr. Leonard to to confirm that it does. When I saw the agenda yesterday, I expected to see several items related to teacher certification, disciplinary actions, not, not on the list. So now we're two months with no action on, on folks, and and I, and I find that troubling. We, you know, I, and I've made the comment before, we have people's livelihoods in the balance, and maybe they've put it in the balance because of their actions, but if we need to change things, I I just feel we've got to, to address that somehow, and I'm not sure how we do that, but, and and I, I hate to say this, but I I don't think we can wait till the October meeting, which is another month. So I feel like somehow, some way, and I, and I wish Jackie was here, or maybe you can help us with this, but I, as I say, I hate to say, but I think we need to have a special meeting to address just those specific issues.
Okay, yeah, I'm not prepared to move forward, putting people who've endangered kids in the classroom back in there. We got people under investigation at this time. We have nobody to bring forward under those matters. So we've pulled teachers out of the classroom that have been inappropriate with kids, and I'm unapologetic about that. Through our investigations, there's nobody that I feel should be returned back to this board for any future behavior.
Well, we've sent multiple people to the ALJ for guidance, and I've not seen that for two months, so I don't know what the status of those are.
Yep, we're reviewing the files and taking a look at the actions of those individuals.
Well, there were several people that were up for being dismissed or just being a reprimand. I've received emails from those people, say, hey, what is going on? You know, we've been waiting two months to get our life back together.
Or longer.
Or longer. And I feel like it's kind of our duty to take care of those people, not just keep pushing it down the road.
Yeah, so I'll just be clear, I I am unapologetic at protecting kids. So while I continue to hear this discussion around the adults and people who've had misbehavior in the classroom, I have, one of our top goals has been to protect the kids of Oklahoma. I'm unapologetic about that. So absolutely, under no circumstances would I put an individual back in the classroom because I've got some emails from some people that say they want him back in the classroom. We will continue to hold that high standard of conduct and won't allow him back in the classroom.
According to this, what we saw, there are people whose complaints had been dismissed. They had been investigated, they were cleared. They're still pending.
There's nobody that's been cleared by me to be presented to this board.
Well, it's a board decision, not a superintendent decision.
Well, so as long as I'm here, and if you guys want to run for state superintendent, go for it, but as long as I'm here, it will be my decision of what's presented to the board, and that's the way that we're going to do it. And again, you guys can sue me, don't really care, you guys can run for state superintendent, go out and get hundreds of thousands of votes across the state, represent parents and students and teachers. Good luck, go for it. But as long as I'm in this office, I will be unapologetic about protecting the kids of Oklahoma, fighting back on these teachers' unions that blow up y'all's emails to try to dictate policy. Not going to happen, not going to do it. So I control the agenda, it's not going on the agenda as long as I'm here. That's how we'll proceed forward.
Well, for the record, I've received nothing from teachers' unions. It's just concerned citizens. And the other thing is, it's not just, you know, we're the board, we will get sued, too, if these people's due process rights have been violated. It's not just you, it's us, and we are concerned about that, and we're concerned about appropriately having due process for everyone because they're entitled to that in this country.
Not hearing you say anything about the kids. So what I'm telling you right now is, I protect the kids of Oklahoma, that is my number one goal. So I I I could care less, and yes, the teachers' union campaigns on emailing y'all, I see all those, okay? So that that's fine, you want to say that right now, but I will be unapologetic about protecting the kids of Oklahoma, fighting back against this radicalism. I don't back down to mobs, don't back down to this nonsense of, of, well, what about all of this? No, here's the reality, we've had kids in danger in the state of Oklahoma. No one has had a better track record than this agency of protecting the kids of Oklahoma, removing those individuals from the classroom. Unapologetic about that, and I will not budge on that issue.
Well, nobody's here, I don't think anybody in this room is against protecting the kids. We're all for that. It's just that there are laws that are followed in this country in regard to people's livelihoods.
I haven't heard you say a word about the kids, so that's fine, but I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm gonna tell you right now, that that has been our prerogative, that has been nothing more I've heard on the campaign trail than those individuals and the effect it's had on kids' lives. We're constantly inundated with those things, so again, not going to happen as long as I'm here. Any other new business?
Well, with that said, I'm going to call for a special meeting, so.
Okay. Um, any other new business? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Do we vote on that, or does that just, let it?
No.
Okay. Superintendent, I've heard on the news, I just, with all things being said here, I do wish you and your family well.
Thank you. Do we have any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Can you call roll for us, Jennifer?
Andehan?
Yes.
Carson? Tenny?
Yes.
Archer?
Yes.
Superintendent Walters?
Yes.